Get to it. Mike, if you could, could we have a motion to waive the minutes of December 15th?
Mr. Chairman, do you want to introduce us first?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Top line, I don't know if I can see here, board members, Ms. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Himmel, and the vice chair, Mr. Cavares. My name's Marty Aikens, I'm the chairman. Can I have a motion, please? Sorry, sorry about that.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to waive the hearing in the minutes of December 15th.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Uh, what does this say? Jonathan Greenlaw is waiting. I don't have to say that, right?
No, I'm just trying to help you out, I'm trying to figure out why you got a problem with putting my iPad on.
Okay, alright. Mr. Vice Chair, I need, we have a letter here for a six-month extension for 391 Granite Street. Do I have a motion to give him a six-month extension, please? Case number Z1978.
Mr. Chairman, in matter number 19-78, 391 Granite Street, I make a motion to grant a six-month extension.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman?
First case tonight, we have old business, DVA 2071, Gene Curran. Now, Gene here. Jonathan, is Gene Curran here?
Uh, I'm gonna need them, they can go ahead and unmute themselves, I just have the ability.
Alright. Gene, you can unmute yourself. Might not be there. Alright, here's what I gotta do, we haven't got the plans for the new home yet. And I understand that Steve DeRoche is on a ventilator, I heard. Which is not good, and all prayers go out to him. Uh, but, not knowing, why don't we do this? Why don't we move this to February 23rd? Mr. Cavares, please. Is that alright, guys? Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
You didn't even get the plan yet. Okay, great, have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, the matter number 20-71, Gene Curran, for a variant special permit floodplain to raise the existing structure, or construct a new structure with less than required to offset the setback to maintain existing garage on the premises number 30, Elkhart Road, I make a motion to begin the hearing on February 23rd.
Second.
On the motion, voice vote, please. Madam Chair?
Warren Makins?
Yes.
Mike Cavares?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you go?
Thank you.
Further on the agenda, on the new business, DVA 2074, Michael Lahern, for a variance finding to rebuild the home that was destroyed in the 215 storm on premise number 84, Post Island Road. Is the applicant a representative here?
They can go ahead and unmute themselves if they, yeah.
Alright, can you unmute yourself, please? Is anyone on here? We missing people? We're not connected? What the heck's going on?
Michael Lahern is contractor, the homeowner is Karen Albanese.
Karen, are you here? Karen Albanese?
I don't see them in the room.
Alright, we'll hold that, we'll go back to it. Maybe people having trouble logging in. Go back to the, uh, DVA 2078. Peng Wu for a finding to enclose the front porch in the premise number 83 Dell Street. Is the applicant a representative here?
Uh, yes, I'm here, along with my wife.
Alright, uh, Mr. Cavares, could, uh, you swear in, please?
Yes. You raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, I hope you God?
Yes.
You have the floor, why don't you explain to the board what you want to do?
Yeah, um, thanks for, uh, hearing us today, but-
Jonathan is, oh, there it is, I got it, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, thanks for hearing us today, um, you know, it's just, uh, pretty simple for us, we, um, have an existing porch, all you want to do actually is just to enclose it, uh, we're not adding anything, no extensions, whatever, uh, whatever this may be, did you want to add something?
Um, no, uh, you know, the purpose is that we kind of want to have a mudroom where we can place our shoes.
Yeah, usually right now, um, that's, we have like a shoe rack and stuff in, uh, in the main living room, just want to-
Oh, this?
Put that out there, um, yeah.
They're not gonna put heat out there or nothing like that, it's just-
No, no, no.
Get out of there.
Behind us, might be some insulation, but there's no electric heat that goes out there.
Alright, any questions of the board members?
I did notice, Mr. Chairman, that, um, looks like the thing is pretty much already built.
Yeah.
I know the board frowns upon that usually.
Yeah.
Want to point that out.
Uh, Mr. Duca, is that what happened here? They, they started building the porch and then someone saw it? And then they realized they had to get a permit to do this?
Yes.
On the board, okay, that's what happened, they get caught.
Actually, it wasn't, it wa-
We just weren't aware.
Yeah, we apologize, we didn't know, we, we didn't, we, we, we obviously didn't need to, like, you know, go ahead if it wasn't, you know, for, for the policy, but, we, you know, when, when the inspector came over, he told us to, to, like, stop it immediately, we stopped immediately, we-
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, we, we, we didn't, like-
Well, I guess I have, that, that raises another question that I have, Mr. Chairman, which is, uh, who is doing this construction? Was it the homeowner? Was it the contractor?
It's actually, um, so we were working on it with a family friend who is in the construction business.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, something come up, something come up on my screen. Jonathan, should I put, like, admit or don't touch nothing?
I'll take care of it, don't worry, it's only because you're a co-host, it's just somebody waiting in the weight room.
Alright, but it keeps, yeah, it blocked my screen on top. I just, uh, the homeowner, I didn't hear what you said because it kind of shut the, shut off my mic when that came in.
Yeah.
Who's the contractor?
Yeah, to address Mr. Cavares' question, it was, uh, actually, we were working on it along with a family friend who's in the construction business.
Just in the business or has a company?
Uh, he-
No, he doesn't have a company.
He doesn't have a company.
Oh, he's self-employed.
He's self-employed.
Alright. You know, uh, I hope people are listening out there, really, you gotta, you gotta come down here and see what you gotta do if you're gonna be doing work on your house and remodeling and-
Absolutely.
Rules for all this stuff, so-
Absolutely, we will, we will not make that same mistake twice.
No, 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 I, I know, people make mistakes, it happens a lot, uh, and they realize what they have to do. Mr. Duca, was no fine assessed?
What's that?
Was no fine assessed?
Um, I have, I don't know if the inspector were a violation, okay, whether the resident will hear the-
Okay, no. So if there was a fine in that, uh, the commissioner said he'd, he'll deal with that in house. Any other questions of the board members?
Is it, does it meet, uh, is it meet building code?
Yes, it will be, it will be-
It will, because it's being inspected.
Yep, exactly, and we're gonna talk to, we already, we already know who the, um, inspector is in the area, it's, um-
Excuse me, let me finish, thank you. What happens is the inspector went down there and saw the job, stopped the job, so it's gonna be inspected and everything's gonna be right, you're gonna make sure it's alright. So he probably got a set of drawing from him or something from that, he's gonna go down and tell him exactly what I mean. And that's, that's the good thing.
For Mr. Du-
Done right.
For Mr. Duca, was the porch completely open before they started?
I don't know the answer, I wasn't involved with that.
Okay, that's alright.
Went down and stopped the job that works.
I can address, I can address that, Mr. O'Brien, uh, the, the porch was entirely open.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else question? Mr. Himmel, Mr. Chin?
Questions, as long as Mr. Duca is, is comfortable with going forward under these conditions, I'm, I'm happy to go forward today.
Okay, Mr. Himmel?
Um, yes, as much as it disturbs me that they started it before without a permit, um, as long as Mr. Duke is gonna be happy with the progress of the construction, I'm fine with it.
Okay. We think this, though, these are set.
I'm going to get the construction, something about the-
Yep, he's fine with the construction, it's up to us if we want to let him enclose. Uh, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Call up part of the hearing closed, anyone want to speak in favor?
Use a virtual hand raise or wave on the screen, turn your screen on if you'd like to speak. Not seeing anything, Marty.
Okay, thank you, call that part of the hearing closed, I have a letter here from the DPW, dated January 4th, 2021, 39th Meadow Street, case number DVA 2083. We reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments, is there anyone opposed or undecided? Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Counselor, anyone want to speak? No? Call that part of the hearing closed. Uh, I, I, I mean, I know people, excuse me. Let me get on, get my one cut out now, please, in a month. Anyway, uh, they did, they did what they did, they didn't know, I'll be voting in favor, if there's gonna be a fine assessed, uh, the commissioner will make sure that that's not when they come down and go to get the inspection, I'll be voting in favor. Mr. Cavares?
Well, I'll go, I'll vote in favor, but you know, I have a really dislike of closed porches, especially, uh, that level. But I'll be voting in favor.
I hear you. Mr. O'Brien?
Likewise.
Mr. Chin?
Now, I, um, prefer people request permission rather than forgiveness. Um, however, it sounds like the homeowner was working with, uh, the building department, and, uh, if the, the situation is, will be, uh, inspected and rectified, so I'll be in favor.
Thank you. Himmel?
I'll be in favor as well.
Thank you, could I have a motion, please, Mr. Cavares?
Mr. Chairman, the matter number 20-78, Peng Wu for a finding to enclose the front porch on the premises number 83 Dell Street, I make a motion to grant the finding.
Second.
On the motion? Madam Clerk, can we have roll call?
Warren Makins?
Yes.
Mike Cavares?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, further on to tonight's agenda. DVA 2079, Tannen Mose, Maros, Maros, Hasamore?
Hazemarest.
Sorry about that, for a, for a special permit to conduct a home-based candle production business on premise number 11, Shoreside Road in Quincy, is the applicant a representative here?
Yes, Tannen Hazemarest.
Gene, could you take an oath, please, Mr. Cavares?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, I love you, but the truth will help you God?
I do.
Uh, I, I have a few questions first.
Okay.
What are we doing that's, that's, uh, for, for the business, I mean, what kind of equipment are you gonna have in this?
So the equipment, um, so I have, um, basically like Presto pots, uh, with spouts, um, pouring pots, double boilers, thermometers, scales, computer, printer.
So there's no big stuff that is gonna be giant flames, uh-
No.
wood pans or anything like this?
No.
No. Duca, can't they just pick up? Uh, instead of going to us for this?
Yeah.
If you could, Mr. Duca's now on the, he'll be on the-
Okay, he's, he was the one that addressed, he's the one that instructed me to-
Know what we had for equipment at the, you know, we have to know all that.
Okay.
Are you going to be have, uh, are people going to be in the house, coming to the house to buy goods?
No, this is strictly an online business.
How does the merchandise get to them? It gets those UPS picks it up or sends it out?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna be using the, um, the United States Post Office, and typically, I would either drop it off at the post office or maybe schedule a pickup, you know, at the residence.
Yeah, I guess on voice, you're not on the screen?
I'm not on the screen.
Okay, if I can find you, that's fine.
Sorry.
That's fine, that's fine.
So, you'll be generating no, uh, people coming to the house to buy goods?
Correct.
How many deliveries?
Strictly online.
I guess, the question is really how, how large or how small an operation this is. Um, how, how much, um, how many UPS trucks will show up? Either dropping off raw material or, uh, how much shipping you're gonna drop this off at the post office yourself? Uh, so can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, so, um, Scott, the delivery schedule, I just expect to get, um, deliveries dropped off, not really necessarily picked up. Um, I mean, that would be a good thing, I guess, if I did get that point, but, um, just small deliveries, um, UPS, FedEx, um, United States Post Office, I'd say maybe 10 to 12 a month, really no more than your average, uh, purchasing from Amazon, you know, a consumer purchasing from Amazon.
Can you tell us a little bit about how you, you make the candles? For example, are you using the kitchen stove? Uh, do you need to have other cooking equipment, uh, in order to create these candles?
Yeah, so, um, so I actually use, um, Presto pots, um, so they're basically Presto, um, pots, and they have like a spout in them, and, um, I'm actually doing them in, in actually my spare room, so it's just basically plugged in, um, you know, I put the wax in it, melt it, um, and then I just pour it into kind of a pouring pot, mix a little fragrance in it, and then pour it into, um, a candle container.
So these are, these are electrical based?
Correct.
Alright, so this, alright, alright. Couldn't make it?
Yeah, um, I'm just wondering why you feel the need to, uh, get a special permit from the zoning board?
I was actually instructed to because I, um, need to apply for a DBA, and I need the zoning board to sign off on it, and I was told that I'd be in violation.
Yeah, I mean, it, 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 it doesn't hurt to have it documented that that's all you'll be doing, I, I, I've, I'm not familiar with your, your, those Presto pots, whatever you call them. Um, so-
Yeah.
I, I would say, you know, I, I would defer to the zoning board to, if they have any other further questions. Before, uh, you would get a, you would, if you get a special permit from the zoning board today, uh, I would condition it that you also would need a building permit, so we could have a chance to look at the situation, have the fire department just check it out to make sure, uh, these pots are, uh, you all approved and so forth and so on, uh, I mean, that, that would be my only comment, I appreciate it.
Okay. I mean, I can send, I could send information on the pots.
I'm just thinking a special permit, and I'm wondering why you need one?
I was, I was instructed that I needed to buy, um, sorry, I don't have, I don't have his name.
I didn't, I didn't know, someone just said that thinking you're gonna have this big business in your house, if you're just doing like little electric pots and aside business, that no one's coming to your house, you're not gonna have people at your house. But, you know, you go special permit, all of a sudden you can have people going in your house, pulling out of your house, this way here, you got a little business, you run your business, going up the post office back. Then isn't there, isn't there, they can just get a-
I would just, if, if, if we're going to give a special permit, we're gonna need to take all the footsteps, right? They get a building permit, just to make, because we're kind of saying, okay, you can have the business, but we need to know a little bit more about the activity.
Okay.
If people, you know, and it's, it, it was correct, whoever told you you needed a special permit is correct because probably didn't understand a lot about what was happening, and this is the first opportunity that I've had to, uh, you know, hear about what you're doing. Uh, ordinarily, uh, I don't think most people would, there's probably a lot more of this going on, not candles, but, you know, other people do pots and crafts and sell it online, uh, I'm sure a lot of that goes on, uh, this could fall into that category. Uh, but I don't see a downside of issuing a special permit, but if we do, I, I think we just need to vet it out more completely with a building permit as well, um, with the fire department.
I, I guess, okay.
So, I, yeah, so I had actually reached out to, um, Jay Duca.
That is Jay.
Yeah, so, that, back in, um, November, and he had indicated that, um, you know, that I'd be in violation of, you know, codes XYZ, and, um, so I had sent him over kind of a letter of like the structure of the business, and then we moved forward, and, you know, this is the first opportunity I've had to, you know, talk about it, obviously. But it's, that was back in, you know, mid, mid-November.
Marty, Counsel, Counsel McCarthy would like to speak.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna let him speak when it's his turn, when I say, I just, we, we gotta talk here. And, and if you, if you, if you're doing a small business like that out of your home, we get a special permit, we're gonna have to start writing down hours, what you're doing, who's gonna be there, what time? And, and you say no, but people start picking up stuff, and it interrupts the neighborhood when we, when we have a business at a home, that we don't know what's gonna happen, so, I'm not comfortable with just saying, open a business in a residence like this until we get a lot more information about what size pots they are, how big they are, timeframe, what, let me finish, please. What we're gonna do and what the business is, because it's a residential neighborhood, and, and we don't, and look at the street model. I mean, it's tight as it is, someone pulls over there, you got three cars, that's all we're saying. Once you get a special permit to have a business, you can run your business, so, right now, I think you'd rather sit with Mr. Duca, come in here, have a sit-down with him, go through your business, show him exactly what's gonna happen, we put this off for a couple of weeks, we get our report from Mr. Duca, what he wants to do in the future, and then we'll pick it up, uh, February 9th? I got it right here, February 9th, yeah, does that sound okay?
Sure.
Alright. Yeah, so I'm sort of, well, she can talk to Mr. Duca, he'll take care of all that, he'll know exactly what she has to do. Yeah, uh, Mr., one minute, uh, Dave, if you could, one minute, does anyone on the board have any feelings that I do?
Well, I, I'm concerned because of basically the size of the street, I mean, it's a dead-end street, it's, you know, built to be cottages, it's, they were at one time, I'm sure, but, so, but I have a concern, that's all.
I, I have a- I should think she gotta check her, um, check with her homeowner's insurance to make sure that's, uh, she can run a commercial business where she's actually making something.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Right, I, I, I'm thinking that there's gonna be construction down there with all of these, um, houses that we have coming forth, and that'll be, the, the trucks will add to the traffic down there, if it's a UPS truck coming in there to deliver stuff. And the other thing is, I'd like to see the inspection of the, of the property by the fire department or whatever before we issue a permit.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's why I want her to sit down, Mr. Duca, go through business and what they got, and if this is gonna be an online business, she can do that, so, uh,
Yeah.
Mr. Duca will, will show her how to do that. I think, yeah, Mr. Duca, uh, said he'd even stop by your house, if you want, just give him a call, he'll set up an appointment and go down and see if that's okay with you. Uh, so, Mr. Chin, any comments?
I just think, um, you, you know, I think we're going about the right way, let, uh, let Mr. Duca have a, have a better look at this situation, and then advise us of his thoughts.
Very good, thank you. Dave McCarthy, Counsel McCarthy, sorry, thank you, Dave. You're up, Dave.
Thanks, uh, Chairman and Board, no, you, you kind of hit a lot of points I was gonna bring up, uh, going around the horn, um, streets are narrow, I don't know, I'm no expert on the, on the, the candle lingo, on, on what's gonna be, uh, you know, in there on Shoreside, it's very tight. I don't know if the neighbors are aware of this. Um, this is a first for me in Res A also, and, uh, one question I was having to, to Mr. Duca, if, if a business in Res A, someone wants to have a business in Res A and they, they don't go to zoning, what's the procedure, Jay, just bringing a new business in, into, into Residence A, like if you were gonna have, uh, another type of, uh, business, and I know there are a few.
You mean a big business?
A small business like this, Marty.
Oh, in a Res.
In a Res A, I mean, what do you do, we're all kind of talking, what are you coming to zoning for, but where do you go?
Well, basically, any business use is, is not allowed in the Residence A district. Uh, so the, the principal use is, is a home, and you can have a home-based business as an accessory use, where if you're making arts and crafts and it's your home and it's, it's really, uh, in a small, you know, subordinate to the home use, it, it could be allowed, and, uh, it's small enough that it, it really doesn't become a principal use. So, the home has to remain, uh, the same look as a home, you can't have a sign, you cannot have, uh, people and, uh, customers coming to the house. And, and that's the whole reason behind the special permit, to allow customers to come to the house. Um, in, in, you know, like an architect may have clients come, or a real estate agent, they have an office there, so, basically, you have to look at it as, the home has to always be the principal use, and the business has to be some accessory, uh, to the person living there, making arts and crafts and selling it, which is, which is fine with a special permit. Um, you're right, I, I agree with the Counselor, this is a new one on me, I really don't understand the candle business, and you have, you know, you get visions of melting flame and heat and all that. And I, I, you know, I'm sure it's probably not, it's probably just what the applicant explained, and I appreciate, uh, that she explained it. Uh, but I'll, I will go out and look at it, um, it, it, it really boils down to how many deliveries and how much of an impact, is it gonna be more of an impact, having, uh, is it gonna be any more than Amazon or UPS? Um, you know, if it's not, then, you know, maybe, maybe it's okay, um, that's in their head before the board. I, I didn't want to take it upon myself, um, to say one way or the other, so I'm glad we're having this open conversation.
Yeah, Inspector Duca, I'm, 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 I'm open to it too, I'd just like to do a little bit more due diligence into the setup, I'd like to make sure the neighbors know down there in the Post Island area. Um, you know, also, uh, I don't want a business just to pop up and, um, and, and, and start, you know, um, start operating without some, some notice, and I know, I don't think anybody's got any, uh, notice because I had spoken to you earlier this, uh, well, late last week, or over the weekend about, about this, and I, my questions were just about what we were talking about, we were kind of, um, waiting to, to see what, uh, this all entailed and, and where we'd go from here, but I wouldn't want to approve it tonight, and I don't think it's, it's going to get approved, but I'd like to look into it a little bit more and, um, and make sure we have everything covered, so, that's my thought.
I'd like to say one more thing, I, I applaud the applicant-
Right.
For coming forward, she did email me back in November, and, and, and I was like, well, geez, she's asking for a business, you know, in a Residence A, and I really didn't know a lot about it, and I understand it a little better now, and I think I'll go down and look at it, but, um, again, I, you know, you don't know how the neighbor's gonna react, and, and honestly, it, it probably if she had done it, and she, she could have been maybe doing it, and nobody would even know she's doing it, I, I, because a lot of that goes on anyway.
Yeah.
I, I do applaud her for coming forward and, uh, will, I'll vet it out, she can call me, I'll come down this week and look at it right away, and I'll report back, uh, to the-
Can, can I ask one more question? Um, is, to the, to the applicant?
Yes.
If we were to come by and take a look, is, um, is any of the equipment there to give us an idea of, you know, what would be, is anything there at all?
Yes, yes.
It is, so, most of what you'd have to get ready to go is, is ready to go, but as Jay said, I also applaud you for, um, coming through and doing the right thing, and, um, I, I, I'd like to take a look myself to see much activity and, 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 um, uh, what would go on down there in the neighborhood, so, thank you, thank you, Board, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor, and that's what I think we were looking at, like, everything that I read here, it's gonna be, she's gonna make some candles, bring them up, have them shipped out, so, uh, that's why I'm trying to figure out what we're doing here before we give special permits for business, let's slow down and take a look at this and see exactly what we have, and we just throw it around, so with that, Mr. Duca, thank you, Commissioner, for, for gonna meet with them, we'll be back in February 9th. Okay, could I have a motion to continue this hearing till February 9th?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the matter number 20-79, I'm gonna kill your name, I'm sorry.
Tannen Hazemarest.
For, thank you, for a special permit to conduct a home-based candle production business on premise number 11, Shoreside, Shoreside Road, make a motion to continue the hearing till February 9th.
Second.
On the motion, I'd like, uh, Madam Clerk, we have, uh- vote.
Mark Negan?
Yes.
Mike Covaes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Hamel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further under tonight's business. John and Denise Dow, case number twenty, ZBA twenty eighty-three. For variance to convert the attic space into living space on the premises number thirty-nine Meadow Street. The Applicent Representative here.
Right here.
Hi, Chairman, hi, Board.
All right, are you on? Oh, there you are, okay.
For the people with a bad connection.
There, that's all right, I see you. There you go, you're all purple and green and yellow and cool, awesome. You have the floor, but first of all, Mr. Kavas, could you swear any applicants?
Yes, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, I love you, but the truths will help you, God.
We do.
Thank you.
You have the floor. Why don't you tell us what you want to do?
Well, um, I'm John Dow, this is my wife Denise. And and currently, we we live at nine twenty-one East Squatom Street. My son and his bride and his two children live at at thirty-nine Meadow, this house in question. They have a growing family. Um, my my granddaughter has autism. And my and my son and my my granddaughter, uh, I'm sorry, my son and my daughter-in-law just had a a new baby. The house is getting very small, very quick. It's under a thousand square feet, and there's no room to move, and so we were thinking if we could there's a attic space up there now, if we could make that into living space.
You want to have a second floor?
That would give them plenty of room to to live for years to come.
So you're gonna put on a second floor?
Yeah, there's there's currently a a standing room attic space up there now, but, and there's windows, but it's not movable, so we want to.
You're gonna lift it up, put a whole second floor in there, and then go back eight feet, two floors?
Correct.
Okay. Does everyone understand that, guys? Okay. Uh, and you're gonna match everything that's there?
Correct.
Whatever's on the outside, you're all gonna match with what's there, so we're gonna be seeing the same color house. Are you gonna change that or?
Um, I think we'll probably go with with hardy plank and keep it something, um, a muted color, maybe one.
Nice. Very nice. Now, as far as, uh, the dementions here, change in anything? Everything staying the same, you're taking the same lot lines? Just going back eight feet in the second floor, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I have no questions. Uh, Mr. Kavas?
I have one question. How many bedrooms is is this gonna be?
It will be ultimately.
This is Denise speaking now.
Hi. It will be three bedrooms, two full, one half bath. Right now, it's two bedrooms, one full.
Except I was a little, I I couldn't make out how many bedrooms are gonna be in the new structure, so. I just wanted to ask that question.
Three bedrooms upstairs.
Makes sense to have three.
Yeah.
Yeah, the the bedrooms will be upstairs, and then downstairs will be just space with the kitchen.
Uncle Harris.
Opened so the family can move and live.
Oh, no.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Um, no questions at this time.
Mr. Chin?
No questions.
Hamel?
No questions. Nice little project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Harris, I'm gonna say a few words.
Yes, very few. Thank you, um, Happy New Year to all you folks on the on the board, and thank you for what you do. Um, and I just wanna speak to, um, the the project that's going going ahead. I have heard, uh, uh, nothing but positive from from the neighbors, so, um, I I I full one hundred percent uh, wholeheartedly, um, uh, support this project going, uh, going forward, and especially to my neighbors behind me, the Dows. They're good people.
Thank you, Counselor Harris.
Yep, so.
They're following the lot lines, they're doing it right, you know? They're not trying to grab the edges of that property, they're doing a good job. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
You know, all the, um, all the neighbors love my son and and my and his family, so they're all they're all very much in, um, favor of this. They want them to to stay a long time.
Good, they're gonna stop painting and everyone pitching in with the paint and all that, I hope.
Oh, yes. Can I also?
Even the baby.
If I can impose on you guys for one quick second, I just wanna tell you one thing, and this is an aside, and I just have to tell you this.
Yeah.
You you all probably don't remember us, but we were before you about four years ago to do the house that we're in right now.
Yeah.
And my father, from New York, was blind, and he was moving up here. We wanted to move him up here. We, for variance to put it in a residential elevator. And, um, at the time, I had taken him to every specialist in Manhattan. And they all said there was nothing for it, there was nothing to be done. Uh, that he was blind and he was eighty-nine, and that was the way it was gonna be. I know that on this, because of you guys, on the second day after he moved here, I took him to get to register him with the Blind Commission at Massachusetts here. And the guy who we went to go, he said, looked at me like I was crazy and said, I can fix. Oh, and he did.
Whoa.
Oh, yay.
And after twelve years, my father died back. Which would never have happened if he had not moved to Massachusetts.
Oh.
Good luck.
Read, he can read, he can draw.
Wow.
Do everything.
And he's a Red Sox fan.
Can write checks?
He had to give up his, uh, his Yankee membership, and now he's a Red Sox.
Awesome. That's a good one for the New Year, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Something about like.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor?
If John Rutherford's in?
I'm Is there any correspondence?
I swear to tell the truth.
Sorry, Mr. Kavas.
Um, Project Phil, six-two Grandwall Road, I'll be quick. Um, I'm in favor, I'm always in favor of, um, a homeowner, um, increasing the size of their property. They pay a lot in taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else wanna speak in favor? Second call?
Don't see anymore.
All that part closed, no correspondence. Anyone opposed or undecided? Anybody? Opposed or undecided?
Not seeing anything.
Second call? Third call. Call that part of the hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor. Mr. Kavas?
Comment?
I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah.
Mr. Chin?
In favor.
Mr. Hamel?
In favor.
Have a motion, Phil.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Number Twenty dash Eighty-three. John and Denise Dow, for a variance to convert the attic space into living space and extend the house out eight feet here on the premises number thirty-nine Meadow Street. I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second. Madam Clerk, could I have a roll call, please?
Mark Negan?
Yes.
Mike Covaes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Uh, yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Hamel?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we gotta go back to, uh,
Eighty-four Post Island.
Eighty-four, now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your work.
Thanks for that story, I appreciate that.
I do. You have no idea.
We have, uh,
Um, you're looking for Mike or Hearn?
No, I know, but thirty, the first, the first case, we're gonna raise thirty, oh, uh, twenty-sixth.
Twenty-third, February twenty-third.
February twenty-third.
Can Jonathan see the participants to see if there's a Mike or Hearn?
Is there a Mike or Hearn here? Aaron Albin?
I don't see anybody in the way in the participants list.
Is there anyone here for Post Island Road? Is there anyone applicant or anyone here that has anything to do with the application? Post Island Road. Uh, Mr. Covaes, could I have a motion to move this to February twenty-third?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
March, wait a minute. What do you have for the twenty-third? I know, but they've been waiting like the you know, and they should have been.
Um, I I I'm.
What do you have, the twenty-sixth? Do you have a lot?
Uh, the twenty-third, I have two old businesses.
No, 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 anyway.
Oh, January, um, I that's old.
I know, how many do you have, Phil?
I can't think of someone who's like five or six.
Okay, so that's January, I mean, February ninth?
February ninth will be good. It's not closed yet, that'll be closed Thursday.
Why don't, why don't we move this to February ninth, and we'll get ahold of them and tell them they missed it. Something could have happened.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Number Twenty dash Seventy-four. Madam Number Twenty dash Seventy-four, Michael Hearn, for a variance finding to rebuild the home that was destroyed in the twenty fifteen storm on the premises number eighty-four Post Island Road, and make a motion to continue the hearing.
Second. We have a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mark Negan?
Yes.